Also tonight that you would guide and direct them as they conduct the city's business. Father, we pray for our nation, Father, that we might draw an eye to you and that we might do that which is right in your sight. We pray for those, Father, who've been through tragic circumstances recently, Father, tornadoes and weather and others who've had personal losses. We just pray that you'd comfort them as only you can. We pray and ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item number four is the Citizens Forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit their presentations to no more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer the matter to a future agenda, to an existing policy, or to a staff person with specific factual information. The claims against the city, city council members or employees as well as individual personal appeals are not appropriate for Citizens Forum. If necessary, the city council may convene into executive session under chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code regarding any item on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, the Citizens Forum is now closed. The next item is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council with such approval applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda. A council member may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda and consider it as a separate item. Does any member wish to remove an item from the agenda? All right, do I hear a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. Item number nine, receive presentation of the Police Department Racial Profiling Annual Report. Chief, do you have a presentation, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, I would like to, I would like to introduce Dr. Eric Fritz. Dr. Fritz's firm each year has, has compiled our racial profiling report that's mandated by state law, that, that we, that we collect certain data every year on our traffic stops. That data specifically referring to race, ethnicity, or national origin. And so, that, that, that data is always collected every time our officer writes a ticket. At the end of the year, we compile that data, we provide it to Dr. Fritz's firm, he does the comparative analysis that's, and the process is really regulated by state law. State law dictates exactly how the report's supposed to be done and compiled. So, I'd like to introduce Dr. Fritz and then he'll do, he has a presentation that outlines his report and the, and the process that he went through.
Thank you, Chief. Welcome, Dr. Fritz.
Hello, thank you. I think we're working on a clicker for the presentation, so we may be on the first slide for a little bit. But thank you for having me this evening. I'm gonna go over the racial profiling analysis we do for the Paris Police Department on an annual basis. And so, I'll just kinda, I'll go, I'll start. So the first thing that we do is we make sure that the agency is in compliance with the law. So the chief made a comment regarding Texas law. So we have a racial profiling law in this state that was enacted in 2001 and in that law specifies what each agency must do, every law enforcement agency in the state must do in order to be in compliance with the law. So the, perfect. So the first thing we do is make sure that the agency is fully in compliance. That includes assessing their policy, training and education they provide their officers, the complaint process they have, public education about the complaint process. And most of the analysis is about the data that is collected. The chief mentioned that on every traffic stop that is conducted during the calendar year, so 2022, officer collects a variety of data points on the stop, including the race ethnicity of the motorist and also things such as the violation that occurred, what the outcome was, was a citation issued or a warning, was a search conducted, the type of search that was conducted, whether contraband was discovered, et cetera. And that is all specified in our Texas racial profiling law. We spend most of our time looking at the data and that's what I'll be talking about this evening. Our Texas Code of Current Procedure, our racial profiling law specifies the analysis, and the chief referred to it as comparative analysis, so specified the analysis that must be conducted each year by the agency. This slide is the first analysis that is done. It basically breaks the race, the traffic stops down by race ethnicity as a total. We have two things at work when we do a racial profiling assessment. We have our racial profiling law, but then the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, otherwise known as TEACOL. TEACOL specifies that certain things must be done as well in regards to racial profiling. TEACOL is the licensing and training body for the state of Texas regarding peace officers. They are by, by law, they are given the authority to enact the data collection and the analysis reporting function for the state regarding racial profiling. So they want us to take the raw numbers that you saw on the previous slide and compare them to your population. We do two, we do your city population and your county population. City population is 2020 and so is the county. And so basically what it shows is that about sixty-one percent of your stops were white motorists and about fifty-six percent of your population is white. Twenty-nine percent of your stops were black motorists. Twenty-three percent of your city population is black. Twenty-nine percent of the stops were black motorists. About eight percent of the stops were Hispanic motorists and about twelve percent of your population is Hispanic. Same analysis is done for the county population. Keep going with the wrong button. A couple of issues with the stop data that's analyzed. One is we don't have a good benchmark. So TEACOL says you need to look at county population, which we do, but it's not a measure of the driving population and that becomes problematic of being able to have an apples-to-apples comparison. The other thing is, is that since 2009, every traffic stop that's conducted, the officer documents whether they knew the race ethnicity prior to the stop. And most of the time, as you see there, about one percent of the time, a Paris police officer knows the race ethnicity of the person prior to the stop. It's pretty consistent across the state of Texas. Study was done in 2015. So all the agencies, about 1,200 agencies, about three million traffic stops in the state of Texas that year, looked and there was about two percent, three percent of the time the officer knows the race ethnicity prior to the stop. That stayed consistent. I looked at the past two years, one, last year, 2021, because that's the last available data, it's 1.99 percent. The year before, it was 2.9 percent. So it's pretty consistent. And so what we have done is really spent most of our time looking at post-stop actions because if the officer doesn't know the race ethnicity of the person prior to the stop, our attention should be on the post-stop outcome. So what happens after the stop, after the officer approaches the vehicle? That's the second analysis that's required under law. And basically when a person is stopped, one of four things happens to them. They either receive a verbal warning, a written warning, a citation, or they are arrested. Those are the four outcomes that are assessed. Overall, not by race ethnicity, but overall, about seventy-five percent of your stops result in a warning, which is the least enforcement-oriented action there can be on a traffic stop. Either it's a verbal warning or a written warning. So what verbal warnings, written warnings, citations, arrest shows is basically a column assessment. So basically says that of the white motorists that were stopped, sixty-two point eight percent received a verbal warning. Of the black motorists that were stopped, fifty-nine point one percent received a verbal warning. Of the Hispanic motorists that were stopped, sixty-two point four percent received a verbal warning. And then on throughout the other outcomes. What we look for is consistency. So we want motorists by race ethnicity to receive similar outcomes. Whatever those outcomes are, we want them to be similar across the race, racial, ethnic groups, which is what they are depicted here. Kind of the difference is arrests, which is fairly common, to be some disparity on the arrest side because largely most arrests, two-thirds of them are due to an outstanding warrant. And then the other one is due to a violation of the penal code. Third analysis to look at searches. So after a stop, one of those four outcomes will occur and a search may occur, may occur. So about fourteen percent of the time, a traffic stop results in a search. And so the searches, white motors, black motors, Hispanic motors, is the same kind of column assessment where of the white motors that were stopped, twelve point two percent were searched, et cetera. We look at the reason for the search. About forty percent of them are based on consent. About twenty percent, twenty-six percent are based on probable cause. The one that we post, pay most attention to, the one that is most common are the consent searches. And so there were two hundred and sixty-six of them in 2022. It's about forty percent of all your searches and it's about five and a half percent of your stops. So five percent of the, five to six percent of the time in which a traffic stop occurs, there will be a consent search that is tied to that stop. Last thing we look at is whether or not contraband was discovered. So searches based upon consent, probable cause, searchings to arrest, all the reasons that are allowed or authorized by law. The question then is, are we searching and getting fruits from that search? And fifty-one point five percent of the time, contraband is discovered. That's above the state average, usually the state average is somewhere in the forty percent range. So this is above average. So the officers that are searching are most of the time finding contraband. Most of the contraband that's discovered is drugs. About two-thirds of the contraband discovered is drugs. The last thing that is required under law is to look at the racial profiling complaints that occurred. And in 2022, Paris Police Department did not receive any complaints regarding racial profiling regarding a traffic stop. Can I answer, any questions?
Counsel, any questions of Dr. Fritz?
No.
I don't have anything.
I would assume this is a good report and that we should commend our department for complying with the state law.
Definitely, definitely. Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you too, Chief. Item number ten, conduct a public hearing and act on a resolution reauthorizing the city to become eligible to participate in residential tax abatements and approving guidelines and criteria for the residential tax abatement program. Mr. Vine?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, City Manager Path is out this evening, so I'll be sitting in his stead. In October of 2013, the city council passed an ordinance creating the residential tax abatement in the reinvestment zone. It was later amended. It first created the districts one through five. Now, it includes all of these districts and it's been renamed to reinvestment zone. That resolution is about to expire, it's a two-year resolution. So before we lose that, we would like to re-up it, have, have a council readopt it. There has been some discussion with developers internally to possibly expanding this program to multifamily residents as well. And if Andrew, if you'd like to speak directly to that?
Yeah, there's been some internal discussion about what we may want to consider moving forward. I've had some initial conversations with a large-scale developer that we may entertain it. My sense though, in discussing it internally with staff, is that if the council would like to direct staff for further consideration, my feeling is that our greatest need is in rehabilitation for older structures that are in need of some TLC and some reinvestment. That may be where we want to consider investing our priorities on incentives.
What's before you tonight is simply a reauthorization of the prior guidelines and state law requires that we have a public hearing before readopting those.
Okay, thank you. I will open the public hearing and ask for anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition of this item to please come forward. Seeing no one, I will now close the public hearing. Any discussions?
I'm just curious. I, I don't know, I feel a little hard-pressed on, on a lot of this multifamily tax incentives. I'd just be really honest with you on that because how I see it is, is and we've, we've, a lot of us have talked about this, we really need some single-family homes here. But what we're seeing a lot of is multifamily homes, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. I don't necessarily have an issue with that personally, but where I do have an issue is that's what we're seeing a lot of. We're not seeing as many single homes. Now, if I'm, if I'm mistaken on that, if I'm incorrect, please correct me. But that's where I'm seeing a lot of the issues here and it's great to incentivize duplexes and triplexes, but let's incentivize our single-family homes. That's my, that's my narrative. I mean, that's what I'm thinking. What, what say you, rest of council?
I just went through one myself in an old house and I think the city has a really great policy that any improvement that you make on your property, you can apply for a tax abatement for a certain amount of years and, and I like that a lot. I think that the city is very generous in their abatements. I really also echo Councilmember Pankaj here because the, we do see, we're just seeing nothing but multiple family structures going up, duplexes and quads and triplexes and apartments and things. And that's okay. I mean, there's nothing wrong with that, but to additionally incentivize that is, you know, kinda, I think that's kinda going a little overboard. I mean, we've got a great program with the five and five program going on right now. It's great and we're having, you know, a lot of people taking advantage of that and the tax abatements that that offers, but I just think that I'd like to see it stay with, wait, we've got it right now. I think that's number two, I believe, in our, in our selection?
Number ten.
Number two.
Oh.
The second one, where, so we have options?
Oh.
To approve the resolution without future amendments for multifamily being brought back?
Yes. And I think what you're both saying is because we haven't had the housing study even begun yet, we have a chance to vote on that later, but we don't know exactly where we stand with all the housing.
And what we need, yeah.
And what we need and how we can plan wisely. So, but I, I do think, for example, that, you know, this does cover single-family homes, just not new construction. Is that correct? It will, it will cover, but...
Yes, this is for single-family homes. It, it covers new and remodels.
And remodels.
And just to clarify, and I understand what you're saying, I just want to clarify that the direction that I understand that staff was taking this was not for new construction of multifamily, but simply for rehab of existing multifamily. And the idea behind that was to ensure some level of, a decent level of housing and things that already exist. But whatever you guys want to do is certainly what staff will do.
Interesting. Mr. Mayor?
Are any of these, I'm sorry.
No, no, please, please. Ladies first.
Are you, are any of these projected properties in our five and five program? In our, in the designated area for five and five? Because we've got the five and five program so that we could revitalize neighborhoods, right?
That's correct. There would be some older apartment complexes that would say be ten or more units, twelve or more units that are within our eligibility area. However, the specific program for five and five is only new construction.
I got you. That's correct. You're right. Thank you for that.
But I would also concur the, what the mayor is saying here, my sense was although it makes sense to talk about it a little bit now, I think it's premature, honestly, before a housing study is completed, before we have a better comprehension of just exactly what our housing needs are, where the greatest need is, and then what the highest level priority that might evolve as a result of those study recommendations.
Stephanie, I've got a quick question.
Yes, sir.
So could we approve this agenda item as, as it was written prior to, like, like having no changes, just?
You can only do that.
Okay.
And the, and the question was not what you're going to approve tonight, it was whether or not you wanted anything brought back to you for a future date. But what is on the agenda is to readopt the current guidelines, which is for single-family.
And then we can, we can discuss this after the housing study, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And anytime you like.
Well, then I'll, I'll be happy to make that motion then, as stated.
Okay, a motion and a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. Item number eleven, conduct a public hearing on proposed amendments to the 2021 International Fire Code. Chief, are you presenting this?
Yes, ma'am.
Staff, okay?
I was under the impression we were going to do a public hearing first, I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. Tonight, we're bringing before you a request to update the city of Paris's adopted fire codes. We're currently operating under the 2015 International Fire Code and we're asking you to adopt the most current version, which is the 2021 International Fire Code, along with the local amendments. As you all know, the IFC, when it's adopted, provides the city with an enforceable set of regulations governing the safeguarding of life and property from fire and explosion hazards relating to hazardous materials and from hazardous conditions in the occupancies of buildings, premises, and facilities. Updating these codes will keep the city of Paris current with the construction standards and advance the safety of building systems out in our public. Updating the IFC will also assist the fire department in achieving the Texas Fire Chiefs Association Best Practices designation. This designation requires that we be no more than one addition older than the most current version of the codes. Now, as with all adopted codes in Texas, local jurisdictions can adopt amendments to better suit the community's needs. Since 1967, the North Texas Central Council of Governments has promoted the standardization of model construction codes in an effort to simplify the construction process, advance the safety of building systems, promote common code interpretations, facilitate the mobility of contractors, and reduce training and construction costs. They have a regional codes coordinating committee with five advisory boards, comprised of local public and private code professionals who continually review these latest additions of the codes and they recommend uniform amendments for the North Central Texas region. These amendments are based on a variety of factors which are germane to our general area of the country. By encouraging the cities to adopt these standardized codes in the regional amendments, the North Central Texas COG has helped cities reduce costs and increase efficiency and the training of personnel involved in plans review, inspections, et cetera. They've also made it easier for contractors, builders, and developers to do work because when they go from one city to another city, the codes and the amendments are relatively the same. After reviewing the 2021 IFC and North Central Texas Council of Governments recommendations, staff has developed a comprehensive list of amendments to the IFC that we believe will reinforce consistent application and enforcement while improving the city in the areas of safety, health, welfare, and development. We've done so by evaluating what we believe to be our community's needs, our growth, and our emergency response capabilities. And we feel confident in recommending to you that you adopt the 2021 International Fire Code and the local amendments as presented. And I'll be glad to take any questions and answer the best I can.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions?
I had one, one quick question. I know that this is really interesting to me, learning the, the code from, I guess the rankings from one to 10. I, I didn't know about that, but that was fairly interesting. I know that we had been a nine in the past and moved down to a six. What would, what would get us better? What's, what's that process like? I mean, I understand adopting the 21 codes would help us.
Yes.
But is there, is there anything else further that we can do as a community to get even better, like closer to one?
Now, I assume what you're referring to is what we call the B-Sigs?
Yes.
My cohort here will have to answer that question because I, Duke will have to answer that for you because I'm really not familiar with the B-Sigs. I know that it does have a lot to do with the ISO ratings as far as the PPC, the, the property classifications for the fire department. But as usual with the ISO, there's going to be a lot of different factors and our current codes play a large part on both sides of that. Right now, our PPC is a three. That's the ISO rating for the fire department as far as the B-Sigs. It does play a, a large part in the ratings, but I couldn't tell you just how much.
No worries. It was just a curiosity, nothing major, but I just, that was a big jump, so that's good. I mean, I commend you guys on that. And I know we've worked with Farm Marshal Cruz on, on a couple of projects where we've had some issues and, you know, the 15 code that had just been adopted, I think at that time in 2017, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And I'll tell you, you guys do an impeccable job of enforcing that and I understand why you guys do that, so I appreciate that. I, I'm glad that you guys brought this up because we could certainly use more safety in our communities.
Thank you.
Just one question. This was about forty pages long.
Yes, ma'am.
So, a couple of naps before beginning to end, but what would help council members in the future, I think, is if we'd had a red line copy so we would know what amendments we were making to the code. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can you exam, give an example of one thing that we're amending that other communities might take that's in the international code?
Well, one that comes instantly to mind and one of the reasons that, that I always use to illustrate the need to actually have some amendments, and I would have to look up the, the numbers on this, but it's relating to the hot work. If we don't have any local amendments, if you take the International Fire Code strictly as presented, you would have to have a permit for any type of welding, cutting, any type of hot work which would require inspections and it would, I mean, just the, the smallest jobs. So naturally, the North Central Texas Council of Government recommends that we take that out and we gladly comply or try to recommend those same amendments. Just to save staff... out, and we gladly comply, or try to recommend those same amendments, just to save staff hours and contractors' money and time as well, you know, because they don't want to be calling us out there for every, every time they strike up a torch.
Right. That's, and that's a good example. I appreciate putting you on the spot right there. I didn't mean to.
No, that's fine.
But I think in the future, that would be helpful
Okay.
to future councils.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question regarding the ISO ratings.
Mm-hmm.
The lower the ISO rating, does that impact our insurance?
Yes, ma'am.
Our home insurance? So the lower the rating, the lower the insurance premiums also, maybe?
Yes, ma'am. Not as much, we, we discussed this earlier in the year, I believe. It's not as much on the residential as it is on the commercial. On the commercial side's where you really start to see an impact on, with the ISO ratings on the insurance. There's not a lot of impact on the average homeowner, but, you know, we, we do want to protect our business owners for certain.
Also.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions of the chief? I'll open the public hearing and ask for anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition of this item to please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Well, we will vote on, on this on the next item. Item number 12, discuss and enact on an ordinance adopting the 2021 International Fire Code with local amendments. Any discussion? Or I will hear a, a motion?
Make a motion to, to adopt the 2021 International Fire Code along with the local amendments as presented.
Thank you, Councilman Hughes. Any other, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. Item number 13, conduct a public hearing on proposed amendments to the 2021 additions of the International Building Code, the International Residential Code, the International Existing Building Code, the International Fuel Gas Code, International Mechanical Code, the International Plumbing Code, the International Property Maintenance Code, and the 2020 addition of the National Electrical Code. All right. Staff, you have a presentation?
Members of council, the background for the, all those ICC family codes is similar, if not exactly the same, as for the fire codes. I'd just like to also mention that the ICC codes are recognized as the minimum standards, industrial standards, and that code updates and revisions take into account all aspects of construction, best practices and methods. And as new methods, practices, materials come into the marketplace, they have to be evaluated and entered into the code. They also take into account regulations that may not be performing up to par. So those need to be amended. This is one of the reasons that we should amend the codes, is not, a lot of times people think that building codes, every year, they get more and more restrictive. That's not always the case. Sometimes they get less restrictive. Just wanted to make sure that we mentioned that. And as far as the ISO ratings, I'm not a super expert on that. Matter of fact, if you had more questions or wanted to understand that, I would recommend Mr. Cruz. He's pretty knowledgeable on ISO and the insurance, even on the fire and on the building side, and what can, how that would be best practices for us. I would like to say that the primary mission of the building department is to protect the life and the safety of the residents and visitors of the City of Paris, preserving the quality of life and contribute to a lasting economic development. Keeping current by updating the building codes will improve the building department's ability to complete these tasks and to assist the city's ability to promote safety, protect life, health, and well-being for both our citizens and our guests while keeping our knowledge and methods in safeguarding life and property. We would recommend that you adopt the entire list of ICC building codes. International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Existing Building Code, International Mechanical Code, International Plumbing Code, International Fuel Gas Code, and the International Property Maintenance Code, all the 2021 additions, and the 2021, 2020 addition of the National Electrical Code. They're off by one, one year in their building cycle. Did you have any questions on the building codes? Our family of codes?
Questions?
I have one on the International Property Maintenance Code. Isn't that just for the historic district right now?
Currently, I believe it is for just the historic district.
Sure. So if we were to adopt this, would this increase it to the entire city, or would it just remain within the historic district?
I believe we're trying to adopt it for the entire city.
No, the agenda specifically references it just for historic.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, just for the historic.
And it's not adoption of the code. You know, the public hearing has to be, is for the amendments, and we're making a very small amendment to the International Property Maintenance Code, and then the ordinance will make that change, but we're not adopting it for any of the rest of the city.
I wasn't, no.
I had one question regarding, I know we've, we've, some of us have spoken about this with the staff of the electric vehicle charging stations, but if we can, I, I know that this is still a new topic to a lot of folks, and especially in the code world, I get it, but as homes are starting to be built, as businesses come in, and even within our very own downtown, I know we're, we're having discussions to put EV charger stations. If we can shed some light, or maybe talk to some other officials that have done this within the communities around Texas, around the state, or in general with the coding agencies, we can figure out a little bit more and shed some clarity on that. I know there's been a little bit of confusion, but I want to make sure that we get some positivity there. I mean, it's starting to come about. A lot of the major car dealerships and brands are starting to come out with these electric cars, and, you know, we just want to keep moving ahead, but we want to make sure that we do it the right way, the safe way, and, and continue to have a good enforcement of that.
Yes, it is a, a evolving quite fastly as far as EV charging, electric cars, and, and it's, every day, you, you have to stay up on top of that as far as code goes.
It's growing.
And isn't allowed.
Fast.
Yes.
And again, I don't want to put you on the spot, but can you think offhand of an amendment that was made? Because in our backup, we really, it, it didn't spell those out. You know, what, was there something that was deleted or amended to be less restrictive than the, as it was originally written?
Again, you know, it's, most of the building code portion of it that we're adopting is actually making it clearer. So better definitions, explaining things a little bit better. Some of them are state law. I mean, like a, a simple one that, it's kind of a no-brainer is, very beginning of the code says, insert jurisdiction name here. So we put Paris there.
Okay.
And I do have, this is the North Texas Council of Governments, and I would, if I would have thought, I could have handed that out to you, but one, one nice thing about North Texas Council of Governments is they do put reasons when they make their recommendations. And a lot of the reasoning is, on, on a lot of the recommendations, to conform with Texas law, or to, conformed to local building practices, methods, or environment. Like, you know, some of the stuff, like we, we adopt a, which is significantly less stringent in the IRC for environmental, wind shear, earthquake, like we don't have to, you know, we don't have a lot of earthquake problems here, frost, ground depth. So that all brings that up to our local, regional area for historic data. I don't know if that answered the question real well or not, but.
Yeah, I think it does. Thank you very much. No more questions? I'll open the public hearing and ask for anyone to speak in favor or opposition of this item to please come forward. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and we will go to item number 14, discuss and act on an ordinance adopting the 2021 additions of the International Building Code, the International Residential Code, the International Existing Building, the International Fuel Gas Code, the International Plumbing Code, and the International Mechanical Code with local amendments, adopting the 2020 addition of the National Electrical Code with local amendments, and amending the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code regarding historic buildings. Any discussion on this item? I will hear a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. Item number 15, discuss and act on a resolution approving a residential tax abatement agreement with Paris Lamar County Habitat for Humanity for the property located at 743 East Polk, Block 2, Lot 22, Gibbons Park Edition, LCAD number 11781, and property 448 10th Street Northeast, City of Paris Block 69-B, Lot 3, LCAD number 14651, and property 51, um, 813 5th Street Southeast, City of Paris Block 161, Lot 1, LCAD number 16659, and property 1274 15th Street Southeast, Block 8, Lots 3 and 4, Gibbons Park Edition, LCAD number 11594 pursuant to the Five and Five Housing Infield Development Program. Mr. Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. First off, I'd like to give accolades to the mayor for that excellent reading of the longest description on the agenda this evening. I'm pleased to report that we have now brought full closure to Habitat for Humanity. We've been incrementally working on taking care of their tax warranties, two-stepping them, if you will, into the Five and Five program. We've also been working with Lamar County Board of Commissioners regarding approvals for their tax foreclosure lots as, as a part of this as well. We have the remaining four properties from the previous approval that occurred strictly on a tax abatement last year that enabled them to get their, their single house built underway last year, and now we're bringing closure to the remaining three parcels, one of which will be split, so that two single-family homes will be constructed. Representatives of Habitat are here this evening. Should you wish to hear from them, otherwise, we have their application fully in order and are recommending your approval this evening.
Thank you. I know there's been lots of work by staff and, and Habitat people, so we appreciate all of you on that. Any discussion?
I just want to say, nothing makes me happier than to see a nonprofit and the city work together, so I echo what the mayor said. Good job. I mean, this is, this is what we want to see. This is good work.
And this will give us our single.
Yep.
Single-family homes for sure.
Yeah. There you go. I know. Two birds with one stone. Absolutely.
I don't know if council members noticed or not, but in their supplemental material, they provide a floor plan and a front elevation, which is what we've been asking about these, for these five and five programs, is to see what the front elevation's going to look like. So thank you all so much for having such a beautiful application for us to work with.
Yes.
On, on that point, we are asking all five and five developers to provide that same information. We've tried to do that in each and every case. Also, I'd like to comment, if I could, on the, the mix of housing units. I've just recently, in fact, as recent as today, finished a further update and evaluation of where we're taking the Five and Five program. We're trying to come up with some forecast for where we're at with the program and other housing starts as it pertains to a different study that the city's undertaking right now. Some of this housing information was, I think is very important as a part of that. I know that we'll deal with that at a future point in time, but some of this update, once it's completed, I think we'll include in the council report. So you see that there is, in fact, a good mix of single-family duplex. There are some small apartment project that, that's been a part of this as well. So we are seeing a good, well-rounded mix.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any more discussion? I'll hear a motion?
I move that we approve agenda item 15 as presented.
And a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. Item number 16, discuss and act on a professional services agreement with Catalyst Commercial, Inc., in the amount of $9,630 to be split with the Paris Economic Development Corporation and one other entity for a Phase One of a housing study, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents. And I believe this says the amount, that's the amount that the city is paying. Each of the other two entities will be paying that, but that is a very small amount. Phase One will not be as intensive as Phase Two, but it's a beginning anyway. Mr. Vann?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, as you recall, 2022, '23 budget, we set aside money for a housing study, and in short, a housing study is a tool intended to examine the community's needs and make recommendations that impact the city and our policy. This, this tool will examine our demographics, our economy, our existing stock of housing, look at our needs, future plans, employers, incentives such as tax abatements, et cetera. Mayor and Maureen Hammond with PEDC and myself have had experience with Fries and Nichols, which is a multidisciplinary engineering firm. We've reached out to them. They've recommended Catalyst Commercial, Inc. to perform Phase One. So as part of that, they will come and do a, if, if council agrees, they will come and complete a, a lot of research on our city, look at all of those needs. City manager path has reached out to Philip and Sally Cecil Foundation, and they've agreed to pay a third. So in essence, this would impact our budget, that each, each entity would pay $3,210 for Phase One. So the recommendation before you tonight would be that approve the professional service agreement with Catalyst Commercial, Inc. in the amount of $9,630 to be split between PED, PEDC, excuse me, the city, and also the Philip and Cecil, Sally Cecil Foundation for the housing study, and authorize the city manager to sign paperwork.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
It says right here that the Phase One is going to take three months to complete?
They're about to.
How long do you think Phase Two is going to take?
I do not have that information handy to give you. I'm sorry. I would think under, under a year, though, Phase One and Two.
Good.
Because we're, we're more than halfway through this fiscal year, and so it's, it's information that we all need ASAP.
Yeah. Good deal.
All right. No further discussion or questions? I'll hear a motion?
Motion to approve, motion to approve as presented.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. Item number 17, convene into executive session pursuant to A. Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person, and B. Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employees as follows, city manager. The time is 6:16 PM, and the city council is convening into executive session. The time is six sixteen PM, and the city council is convening into executive session.
Adam number eighteen reconvenant.
Item number 18, reconvene into open session and possibly take action on those matters discussed in executive session. The time is 7:16 PM and the city council is now in open session. No action is to be taken at this time. Item number 19, consider and approve future events for city council and/or city staff pursuant to resolution number 2004-081. Does anyone have anything?
No.
All right. Item number 20, I make a motion we adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.